If you do speak, use your microphone. It'll get picked up on the recording. And then it will also be a reference recording for you going forward. If you find that there's something that you don't really remember or want to kind of hear again, you can go to the Dunn County YouTube channel after a day or so and find that. You won't be making any binding decisions tonight. And then next step, the executive committee made up of the chairs of all the standing committees will and Kelly and Gary Steen will begin to refine the budget at their September 11th meeting. You'll get updates of the board meeting on the 18th of September. Executive is recorded as well. So if you don't wish to attend that in person and you want to hear the discussion, you can listen to the recording. So ask questions, ask questions, ask questions, please. If you're wondering it, somebody else is wondering it as well. We want you to have all the information that you need in order to make good decisions. And if you're wondering about something, tell somebody else. We do have a planned break, so but please stand up and stretch as you as you need. And then so tonight, I'm just going to run you real quick through the agenda. We're going to Beata is going to walk you through navigating the big budget summary document that you provided each year, but was printed in largely for you tonight to see. And she'll walk you through how to work through that as well as a review of the areas of need. We call it the red. Oh, Josie, Josie, mute yourself. We call the second document that Beata will walk you through our red, green sheet. Have you ever watched Red, Green on PBS back in the day? Right, right. And I'm a man, I can change if I want to, or if I have to, I, yeah, if I have to, I guess. Anyway, sorry, Red. Okay, then we're going to do an exercise that Andrew is going to leave you, lead you through on county services, an explanation of how property taxes and the tax bill work by Dan. Just going to reference the budget booklet that we put together for you and what's in there. We're going to take a break. We'll do a really quick update on the neighbors of Dunn County and our finance ERP system. Beata will talk about borrowing strategies. We'll do an overview of highway funding and planning by Dustin, an overview of workforce demographics by Jenna, an introduction of a CIP, a capital improvement amendment by Dan to include alternative energies in 2025. And then we will conclude with a small aboard small group exercise, which is why you're sitting at the tables you are. That will help you to work through balancing the budget. So again, if I didn't say it, ask questions, ask questions, ask questions. And we will work to get you out of here in a timely manner. So that being said, I will turn it over to Beata.
All right, good evening. So I'm not displaying anything as a PowerPoint, so I opted out printing you some hard copies. And hopefully you can use that to take notes. So I'm going to walk over this budget workbook. This is the summary to of all the budget that was submitted by the management. And also what I created is like a cheat sheet that kind of translates what these columns mean. And that is that additional page. I try to coordinate the colors to mirror exactly how it is on a summary sheet. However, this light purple one just wouldn't do it. So try to copy multiple times and just keep showing up as a different color. It's like this tacky color instead. Okay, and then so one item I'm going to point out right away is there is one column that has a slight typo. But maybe we'll, I'll have you change that in your notes when we get to that. So again, I'm just going to walk you through what each column represents. And you can have your key index here as a reference. So on the far left of the page, what I'm showing here is the 2024 adapted budget. And what was, what's the updated budget? So what you see there is what was originally adapted back in last year of November. In the meantime, we had some carryforwards and we had some budget adjustments. So those are reflected in that column. Okay, so those are as of the most recent ones that were as far as budget adjustments that were approved by the county board as of late. So the 25 proposed budget expenditures. So what that represents is what each department submitted for their expenses. And that also includes their CIP that was approved already in earlier this year. And it also includes wages. Wages are again budgeted using 2% increase cost of living and one step increase. So that's all reflected in the 2025 proposed budget expenditures. The next colored tables represent the different funding sources that will help close the gap or pay for the expenditures that were proposed. So the blue, this is the called other revenue sources. So what those sources are, for example, are like grants that department gets or services that they provide and they get paid for. Any federal grants, licenses, permits, fines, forfeitures, again, those public charges, any intergovernmental charges as well. So those would be charges where one department is charging another department for services. So for example, facilities might be doing some work for NDC. Also, any investment income, this would be our interest that we might collect will also go in the column. Any donations and any other miscellaneous revenue. The next column over is the yellow, canary yellow, the transfers from other funds. What this represents is any funds that we would use to balance the budget that are transferred from different fund. So that would be if there are funds sitting in a special revenue fund, for example, capital project fund. So if there's money there, if it's going to be applied in the budget, you would see that in that column. Also, what you see there now is, let's say, like for example, public health, so public health, you will see there's 35,000. All that is is really opioid funds. Okay, so I'm prompted here, I need to speed up a little bit. So debt self-explanatory. Now, the pink, hot pink is, we call it levy, state aid and sales tax. So this is the column that might be the most confusing to you because why is it negative on the top? And why is it all positive down the road? So what what happens is there is we apply, we gather all the revenue from our sales tax, state aid and our levy. Then from there, that is distributed to all these other departments. Okay, so that's just not levy in the column. The purple ones are dedicated to CIP. But one thing I wanted to have a correction on that very column that says 25 CIP, IT and Highway Replacement Fund, that's not really CIP. It's just the IT and Highway Replacement Fund. So that, another one I created, which was the fund balance applied. And that would be if the board approves the funding for the ERP, which later on you'll go through the exercise and that we have for you as a work, a work group. So on the very end, what you see is expense versus revenue and what is needed to balance the budget. So on the very bottom, what you see in the yellow is really the levy. Because if you add up the column that's pink, you're obviously going to come up with greater number than what it shows in the yellow for levy. That is because that column includes that sales tax and any state aid that is received. Any questions? All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, now I get to do another one. All right. So next thing that I provided you with is this document, we call it a red and green. And I'll give you a little bit of synopsis, what this red and green is all about. Okay? So it's seven pages, front and back. It says proposed 25 budget program summary. Okay, you guys ready? Okay. So what I did here, I summarized it at a very high level as to how does this sheet, the budget summarizes more of a user-friendly format, which is here. So I also highlighted is, you know, the whole purpose of this red and green is to identify red would be those that department could act on. If there is a decision to reduce or make cuts in a budget. The green represents areas that are, I wouldn't say necessarily recommend to cut, but it will have an impact. So for example, when you're looking at the county manager and finance, it's, there's a ask of 561,000. Now that's the ERP. So if the decision is to eliminate ERP project, then it will have impact in all these other areas throughout this workbook. Because it's not only county manager and finance that has this cost. And another example you'll see in green is areas that might not be necessarily in the manager's control. The grants got reduced and there is very little departments can do. Also, you might see a green is if there is a wage impact. And even though it's an increase to a wage, but it's one of those that wage, we applied 2% COLA, meaning cost of living and steps. So if the decision is to decrease that, that will impact everybody across the board. So we can't just say we want to cut wages in finance, decrease their wages and keep the rest. So it's all or nothing. Okay, so the red are the ones that will allow departments to have that control to kind of reduce that operating budget. Yes, sir?
Going back to the green department administration, did you say that the 561, 901, how is that related to ERP? And what is, I guess, I don't know what ERP is.
It's an enterprise, enterprise system. That's our existing accounting system that we use. Eventually, we'll need to be replaced. So we've decided, currently, we have put together a team that's going to put an RFP out there to see if the what systems are available to purchase. Now, the board might decide, you know, we're not going to have a system. Eventually, what we have will sunset. So eventually, we're going to have to spend financial resources to deal with the system we currently have. It will be either upgraded or replace it. We did a lot of in-depth analysis. And I'll give a lot of credit to IT for doing that. We did a lot of homework to say, what is the most cost-effective? Now, if we were to keep SAP, it will cost us a lot of money. So we're trying to find alternatives at the, for a better system and also that's less expensive.
Beata, if I, if I might, the really short answer you're looking for, Larry? SAP, the financial software that everybody hates? This is the replacement for that.
Why can't I do a short version like that? Yeah, it's like, yeah, okay, yeah, right. That's what he said, exactly. Yes, Dustin? Oh, only five minutes, okay. So the way, I also put these pages so that you have a convenient way of paging through. The first couple pages that have reds are the first. The preceding pages have a lot of green. That means there usually will be minimal control that management might have to reduce the budget. Including the wages. And one important thing that I promised I was going to do a footnote, but I didn't because I was so busy printing everything else. When you take this sheet and you try to balance to here, you will realize you have a difference. The reason is, is that what I wanted to present here is your adapted budget less any budget adjustments that have taken place this year and any carryforwards. So then you have apples and apples comparison to what was adapted versus to what they're asking. Because when we do budget adjustments and carryforward, it's just fundings or expenses for projects that were yet not complete, but will be completed. Example of a budget adjustment would be additional funding came, but that's kind of like a one-time event. So that is why this report really excludes and does that apples and apples comparison. And CIP is not also not on here. CIP got adapted, it's reflected on this big summary sheet in the total because that got adapted and it has a funding source. To minimize and include all these extra lines, I excluded that. So that gives you more of that cleaner comparison from the operations perspective. Yes, sir?
Just because the number is so big, could you take the time to briefly go through the highway department and bridge petition budget, just so we clearly understand?
Dustin will do a better job at it.
Okay, will that happen later?
Right, so Dustin prepared a fantastic presentation here, so, okay. All right. Anything else? Yes?
Can I go back to this sheet?
Yes.
It took me a minute to articulate my question. Okay, so this last column here, expense versus revenue, what we need. So that's like how much we have to come up with with debt, fund balance and levy. Okay, got it. So then this red, magenta column, 2025 levy, state aid, sales tax.
Yes.
Can you explain that again to me? Because I thought like, okay.
Right, I think, so the deficit is after we applied any known finance sources we have, such as levy and any grants, state aid. So state aid, there's two grants. There is one, I think I did on my cheat sheet, and I gotta reference that. So the state aid is state computer aid and state personal property aid and shared revenue that we receive. And then there's also the sales and youth stacks. So I combine all that pot of money. Then it gets reallocated to all these other departments. And that's what you see in that pink colored column. This expense versus revenue is what, that's the gap that department needs to balance their budget. And that's after the levies been applied or reallocated. So there is no additional levy for me to apply to this deficit. It's been already accounted for.
So I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So the levy has already been applied, is what you're seeing. And so what I'm confused about is I thought we haven't determined what the levy is.
We, we don't know 100% what it's going to be. We use estimates based on what we've received last year with the equalized value of the properties throughout the Wisconsin. And I think Dan has a presentation coming up here that's going to kind of speak to how that, how that works, right? Dan, sorry, don't mean to.
It's not going to talk about what, what is essentially the levy limit is, is what you're at. We can project what our levy is going to be by knowing what our net new construction is, which that those numbers have come out. So you look down at the bottom, there's a yellow section that's our estimated levy that we could, the maximum amount of levy that we could possibly levy in 2025.
Okay, I understand now, thank you.
You did the short version. Thank you, Dan. All right, I'm being cut off. Thank you.
Okay, now for the theatrical part. I want everyone to listen with their listening ears. Okay, we're going to talk about county scenarios, right? So we're going to give you a little description of a day in the life of Danny Dunn. And your job as a group, right, is to determine what county services or departments Danny Dunn has touched in that particular day, right? What has affected him? So a couple of you have scenario one here. I'm going to cut scenario two in interest of time, so we're only going to do one. So let's get going. So think about when you hear the story or when you're reading the story, which county services or which departments have been touched. Danny Dunn lives in Otter Creek on Highway S and commutes to work every day in the city of Menominee, where he works for a cybersecurity company that specializes in local government software. On Wednesday morning, Danny woke up to find a code red silver alert for a missing local. Danny thought about this as he got in his car and turned past the, his brand-new rural address number that was just installed last week at the end of his driveway. While driving on Highway S, Danny took note of the tractors mowing the ditch since it's been so rainy lately and the grass has gotten super long. While driving into Menominee, he noticed that his, what he thought was a car fitting the description in the silver alert this morning that he heard. Shortly thereafter, he saw the cherries and berries going off, which pulled off, pulled over the car. Down the road a bit, Danny noticed someone staking out a monument, probably for that property dispute that he heard about between his neighbors, Tim Townsend and Bob Bergman. Bob is convinced that Tim built a shed on his property. After seeking legal counsel, decided to have a survey of the lot lines done as Tim lives in Otter Creek and Bob lives in Hay River. Bob is convinced that the shed is really going to be an accessory dwelling unit and called in to find out what the rules are on ADUs. Before arriving to work, Danny's wife Debbie called. She's a nurse at Menominee's skilled nursing facility and has been working overnight to make some extra money so they can save up for their trip to Italy. Debbie wanted to remind him to get his passport. He'll need a birth certificate with his full legal name, Daniel David Dunn. Danny makes a mental note before dropping off the latest Dean Koontz book that Debbie checked out. Okay, time for Danny to mentally prepare for his 8:00 AM conference call with the county manager about what he missed at last week's housing work group. So no pressure. Your task is to identify the county services or departments that Danny touched in that particular day on that Wednesday. You have three minutes.
Dustin says you bought me some time, so I get to go for a while. So this is a, I would say it's a presentation we did last year, but I completely redid it. But it'll somewhat cover something that we had gone over, at least in executive, I can't remember if we went over it in the county board. So this is really just kind of to help you understand what the tax bill looks like and how taxes work and how levies impact taxes and assessments impact taxes and, and all the sort. So step one, well, we'll go through this. So first thing we're showing right here is the, I'm going to walk around, is the property tax bill. So this is a copy of a random property tax bill in the city of Menominee. It's mine. So, so what you're gonna, what I have highlighted here, and I know it's probably hard to see in the back, this area down on the bottom in green, that shows the property taxes for that home in 2023 compared to 2022. And so that is showing an increase of 4.5%, which is denoted on the side. And if you do the math, that's about $241. So the section in yellow is breaking down the four tax districts that cover my house. So that includes the school district of Menominee, the city of Menominee, Dunn County and Chippewa Valley Technical College District. Those are the four districts that cover in there. So my total tax bill includes all of those four entities, not just Dunn County. That's only one piece of it. The area in blue, right here, is showing the taxes to support Dunn County. So that's what's related to the levy that we talked about over and over and over again. So that is showing a 0.4% increase from 2022, so about $8. So my tax bill went up $8 because of changes theoretically in Dunn County. So that's just one thing that I wanted to go over. And if you follow the social medias as, as different referendums are happening, I want to make sure that you understand that the property tax bill that you pay to Dunn County is actually, depending on where you are, four bills. So we talked about the four tax districts that apply to me. So this was a fun thing, as I go to do the research of how many tax districts do we have in Dunn County? So I asked our land info department. So we have like 20, right? And she laughed. 74 tax districts. So this is kind of what makes them up. So you talk about the school districts being something that, well, there's the school districts, there's your local municipality, there's your technical college. Pretty much everybody's going to have those three. Then you have lake districts, you have sanitation districts, you have all kinds of other random things that go on. I believe there's, I think it's 12 school districts in Dunn County. So as you go through that whole thing, that's where we get up to 15. The county clerk has to create ballots for all of those districts. So that's just something to point out as you talk about all of the complexities that go into your overall tax bill. There's a lot of different entities that play a part in how, of what your total tax is. And we're only one of them, so. Dunn County prints the tax bills for all of the municipalities in Dunn County. We collect taxes for 13 of the 30. So 13 municipalities, all of the residents there mail a check or come upstairs in order to pay their taxes in Dunn County. The rest of them, if you're in one of those, you're going to pay your local clerk for your taxes. The second installment is always collected by Dunn County up in the, in the treasurer's office. So point being here, county collects all of the taxes. But we also then redistribute that money back to the municipalities or all of those 74 tax districts for the amount of money that they wanted. That being said, your property tax bill is not all the county. In fact, it's a small portion. Yeah, ooh, na. The levy, this is a word we use a lot. And we've, we've come to realize that as like anybody, as we work and spend time with it every day, it's a word that we know and we can define. But we don't always exactly share that definition with everybody. So what is the levy? The levy is the amount of money that a tax district is asking property taxpayers in that district to pay. This is how much money we need in order to cover our operations. So when we talk about the levy, that's what we're talking about. Some questions that come up about what that levy is. And so 2024 Dunn County. And, uh, so, um, 2024 Dunn County's tax levy was 24 million, blah, blah, blah. Uh, the expected 2025 levy is 24.9 million. So it's about a $400,000 increase in levy from year to year. We've talked over and over again in the past, but for those of you that are new, we're limited as to how much we can do that to based on net new construction. That number for Dunn County usually lives around 1.2 to 1.4% in good years. So apportionment, this is some work done by the county clerk's office. The way that that $24 million in levy is distributed out to the taxpayers of Dunn County is we distribute that money equally to each municipality. So we take that, we identify the, there's that item called the equalized value that is developed by the state. Using assessment data and market data, they, they determine how much each municipality is worth. And then we distribute that $24 million to those municipalities based on those numbers that we receive from the state. So we have an example here. I think this is like 2023 numbers, but things stay pretty close to the same. The city of Menominee represents about 31% of the total value of Dunn County. So they pay 31% of that $24 million. So we move on. After apportionment, so now we have separated out that $24 million into the amount each municipality is going to have to pay. Within that municipality now, the municipality has to distribute their portion of that money to each landowner within their municipality. This is where assessments come in. So, um, you're probably familiar with assessments. Their assessors are wonderful people. So they are going to go out and, and assign a market, a value to your house. And, and there's a whole process around that. So each municipality has their own assessor. And they work at different levels, not everything is even. So I talked about that equalized value before. What that is, is that's the state trying to make up for assessor A and assessor B differ in opinions there. The state is going to try and balance that out between municipalities. Otherwise, one municipality would be carrying more of the burden than another. So that's kind of that difference between equalized value and assessed value. But your assessed value is what is going to be used to distribute your tax, your county tax, after it comes down to that municipal level between you and your neighbor. So I have some numbers in there. Total assessed value for the city of Menominee in 2023 was 1.27 billion dollars. So the property we looked at in the bill is assessed at 300,000. So that particular property is essentially responsible for point two, three, five percent. So at a decimal level, that is point zero, 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 three, five percent of the Menominee portion of the levy. Let's stop hitting buttons. That button is the button I wanted. All right, so. What can change your tax bill? So we talked a lot and we've talked a lot in years past. And the sentiment from the board in general is, I don't want to raise taxes. And, oh, I got five minutes, I think I can do it. All right. We don't want to raise taxes. There's a lot that goes into that and, and we completely understand it. But as you look at that total tax bill, what can impact your taxes? Or your neighbor's taxes, or one of your constituents coming up today, saying, my taxes went up, right? So what are those different factors that can happen? First thing, any one of those tax districts can increase their levy. So once again, that, that tax bill that you receive is the sum total of all of those tax, tax districts. Dunn County doesn't raise taxes and the city of Menominee does. My tax bill is going to go up, even though Dunn Counties did not. So you have to kind of factor in all of that when somebody says, my taxes went up. Well, let's look into it a little bit and see what caused this. All right, the next thing, reassessment. Assessors are great people. And they're going to look at your property that you've been keeping up and making better and making better. And your neighbor lets theirs fall apart, right? You're going to pay more taxes than your neighbor in the future after reassessment. That's the way it works. Your value, your property has greater value, theirs has less, they pay less in taxes. So that can happen annually, but you hear a lot about it in the big reassessment periods that are happening, that happen occasionally. We can, we can increase the Dunn County levy based on net new construction. What's the impact there? It's usually very little. The whole idea of net new construction is somebody built a new house. So our levy goes up, but we have a new taxpayer to be able to take on that additional cost. So you actually don't see a whole lot of an increase in levy as it increases based on net new construction. The last one, uh, increase or decrease in the county debt levy. So this is the money that we pay in order to pay back our debt. That isn't limited. So if that amount goes up, then you can see an increase in taxes or a decrease in taxes, depending on which way that goes. Put over on the side, who is responsible for that? You get the bottom two. You, you don't get to control the top ones. All right. How many, how many minutes do I have? Two and a half. All right, so this is an example, and I should probably get you a printed copy of this, of a municipality, not in Dunn County, and four neighbors. Well, not neighbors, four people in the same town that had a reassessment, a long overdue reassessment. And what you can see there, that municipality's total assessed value is essentially doubled from 185 million to 372 million. That just happened overnight with that reassessment. So what these numbers are going to show you, four properties, their year one assessed value and how much they paid in taxes. The year two assessment is assuming no levy change. So this is only, the tax change only as it relates to that reassessment. So if you look at that, property one, their taxes went up by about almost about 370,000 or $370. Right, I do my math right? Yeah. Property four, their taxes went down by 22. No additional tax, no additional anything, just the way that the taxes were redistributed amongst the people within that, within that district. All right, last slide. All right, same properties. So this is looking at a levy increase from year one to year two of 2%. So that's going from, their levy was 1.2 million, their next, their levy the next year is 1.2, well, 1.21 million to 1.23 million. So this is your year one, the same example from before. This is year two after the reassessments. So these, these top two are the same numbers that we, that I showed before. And then this third number shows you how much that 2% increase actually is. So if you look at that after the reassessment, that change of that 2% applies as $50 to property one. And on property four, it is a, about $11 difference. That being said, if we look at the overall taxes, so if this reassessment goes through and a 2% levy, property one is going to see a $521 increase in their taxes. Property four is going to see a decrease of $11 in their taxes. The point being, there's a lot of information. And when somebody comes up and says that their taxes went up, it doesn't necessarily come back to the government asking for more money. It doesn't mean that levies went up. It could mean a lot of different things. And this is just an example of city taxes. That does not include county, school district or tech district. So. Lot of math. Mark.
Would it be possible to get that information?
Yep, I will print those out.
Thank you.
Supervisor power.
Can you talk a little bit more about the mill rate? You didn't talk about a mill rate at all. I mean, is that something different?
Dustin had me on a timer, so I skipped it. So I do, I do have that calculated. So if you look at what a mill rate, what the mill rate is, the amount of tax that a property would pay based on $1,000 of valuation. So if you look at that, there's that $6.53, you'll see that that is true for everybody. So for every $1,000 of property that they have, they are going to pay $6.53 in taxes. After that revale happened, and now all the properties doubled, you'll also see that that mill rate is essentially cut in half in order to, to do that. So that's really the number, as we, we talked about this in the past, that's really the number. If you want to talk about the tax impact that Dunn County is going to have, looking at the mill rate that you provide, how much somebody has to pay per thousand dollars of taxes is really that important number that is equitable to, to everyone. That doesn't mean their taxes are going to go up or their taxes are going to go down because there are too many factors involved in that. That means that the decision that you make as a board is impacting that cost per $1,000 evaluation. Yes. Yes, yeah. And mill rates have their own definition, that's, uh, but it's essentially the same thing.
Oh, budget book. Oh, this is a quickie. Okay, you tell us your spot, a budget book. I just want to give you a disclaimer. So there's a bunch of just foundational information at the front. But then there is a page for each of the departments. And it captures their 2024 budget. Now they're 2025 because 2025 is still in flux. You heard from Beata's presentation and from the red green sheet, you see kind of who's moving around. But so this gives you, just so you get an idea, probably most importantly, in terms of the things that you can influence, looking at the tax levies. So I happen to be on child support and child support receives $77,000 for both levy. And then below in these honeycombs are just a small sampling of the services provided by that department. So this is designed to be a reference document for you as you move forward in budget and in, um, kind of thinking about how to balance the budget. This is like, well, how much levy do we have in, um, the medical examiner's office? And I'll just, in case you want to know, $207,000.
Chris?
Yep.
Just for informational purposes, would you please explain to people the wage variable?
Uh, it's not in here.
But it is, yes, it, it, it is. And, and it, and it will, it might potentially be confusing.
It is confusing.
Sorry, sorry to do that to you.
Okay, so we know that we are not going to be fully staffed as a county. We have about 550-ish staff. We know at any given point in time, we have any place between a roughly four and 10% vacancy rate. Um, and so we essentially, we essentially budget a revenue. That's not really a revenue, it just means we're telling you we're going to spend $50 million. We know we're only going to spend $47 million based on our past 10 years worth of looking at data. And that $3 million helps us bring a balance into the budget. So that wage variable is that money differential applied to each of the departments. That, that's, uh, we've changed the formula for 2025, so it looks a little bit different in 2024, but it's the same general concept. Question about that? Questions about anything that you automatically see in this? We intend to do this for you each year, just to give you a reference document and some numbers to base your, just, you know, your decisions on. With that?
10 or 15.
Uh, let's go. 10 to get out of here. We're going to shoot for a 10 minute break. I know it never works like that, but let's come back at 20 minutes to seven. All right, I'm going to get you to sit back down. Keep you moving, so we get you out of here on the proposed timeline. All right, any questions in follow-up to the things that you heard in the first part of the workshop? I didn't say it in my intro, but as similar to last year, we are Beata and I, or Beata and/or I, or Dan, I knew any of us are willing to sit down with you one-on-one or one in a small group and go through any part or parts of the budget that you're interested in taking a deeper look at. Or if you've got questions and you want to just call anytime, um, just, yeah, drop us, give us a call and we'll walk you through what we can tell you, what we know. Okay, so for the remainder of our evening, I'm going to talk for you for a few minutes about the neighbors of Dunn County and our enterprise resource planning system, ERP, SAP. And then Beata is going to talk about some borrowing strategies that we've had our municipal bond advisor put together for us. You've, some of you who've been here longer have seen some of this work, but it's been updated. And then Dustin's going to spend some deeper dive into highway, um, funding and planning. Jenna's going to take us through workforce demographics. Dan's going to talk with us about alternative energies. And then we're going to do another small group exercise and finish out the evening. And I think you'll find that engaging. So I included in your packet or in your handouts, a document that is called staff report. It's just a reprint from something that was provided to the neighbors standing committee last month or two months ago, maybe. It gives you a summary history of sort of since NDC has been NDC, not prior to that, but where has it been, where's the debt, where's the, you know, where, how much do they owe? Are they making money? Aren't they making money? You don't see NDC in the red, green because NDC does not use any levy, we don't budget any levy. At the NDC standing committee meeting earlier this evening, we actually know now that it's budgeted, it is actually budgeted that NDC will profit in 2025. They will break even, or they will do better than break even in 2024 and they will budget a profit, which is the first time that it's ever been budgeted. We've realized profit before, but never budgeted it. So this is just a summary document. I know there's lots and lots of questions about what happens if we sell the nursing home. So the, so the place where NDC intersects with levy is that the county is paying off NDC's building debt. So if we sold NDC, conceivably that money could be used to pay down that debt. But in the operating, day-to-day operating portion of it, they are not a utilizer of levy. You'll see in this note that they did, they have, they have an IOU with the general fund. It's anticipated that we'll be paid back by the end of next year, 2025. Questions about NDC? Okay, next one. You have a one-page document about ERP. So I don't know why they call me ERP, it's the stupidest name I've ever really known. I just call it a finance system, but I know it's bigger than that because it deals with HR and all. because it deals with HR and all those sorts of things. So on the left-hand side of the document is a sort of a why now. So we bought SAP as a system in 2016. We have put in a ton, an uncountable number of staff hours and financial resource into making that system work as marginally as it does now. By the end of 2026, SAP will be, need to be upgraded or replaced. And that amount of money to do that is the equal or greater to buying another system. So it isn't that NDC is out of the running as a replacement system. It's just that we're going to ask them to be competitive like everyone else in looking at it as a, as a potential resource. You can see the planning timeline to the right. We have been working on planning for over a year, basically a year and a half at this point in time. We have a very robust timeline now here, moving forward to the middle of next summer. And we also have a very engaged and involved, large team across the county. One of the failures, and I say it unapologetically, one of the failures of SAP was that it was a relatively small, a very small group of people who did the planning for the implementation. And that was part of the reason why it wasn't very successful. So we've engaged a broad cross-section of stakeholders. They are working very actively to make sure that we don't replicate that. And Supervisor Keneer sits on our steering committee so that he, so that we, he can kind of be the voice of seeing the work, the steps that we're going through. So we did not budget for a new ERP in our capital improvement plan because we weren't sure yet then of the timing. We have been accruing interest on our ARPA, our American Rescue Plan money, for, since 2021. And that has accrued to about 500, it's like really actually like $570,000, but roughly $550,000. And we are recommending that in the 2025 budget, we utilize that interest money to purchase our next ERP system. Our goal would be to purchase it right around the first of the year and try to push for implementation by midsummer next summer. We just had an audit report at the Committee on Administration last week. You'll see the audit, the auditor will speak to the county board at large in September. And he put in a plug in the Committee on Administration meeting for as quickly as we can transfer systems, the better. Because it is a kind of a behemoth of a system. And it is not, in all fairness, it's not an SAP issue. SAP is a kind of a tiered vendor system, and people sell it and service it. It's you have, you have a vendor that sells it and services it. I mean, ultimately, SAP is responsible, but SAP works great for like countries, literally like, I don't know, you know, Lithuania or somebody runs on SAP. Germany, I believe, actually runs on SAP. But we have not had great luck with our, our vendor system for it. So, so I tell you that because when we get a little bit later in the evening, you're going to see the, that proposal to use that $500-ish thousand of fund balance to purchase our new system so that we can move to implementation and get out of the mess that we've been in for the last nine years. Any questions about any of that? Larry?
I was present when SAP came in. And at the time, I thought it was really interesting that about the same time that we were getting into it, 60 Minutes was doing a documentary on it and some of the problems. And at the time, it seemed like it was a selling point that SAP is going to work so well for us because whole countries run on it. So my question is, how much time and effort is spent on seeing it works at other counties or other venues or whatever you want to call it, the employee numbers, without, you know, having a system that's used worldwide? I mean, do we contact Polk and St. Croix and Waukesha and see what works for them?
Yes. So I will say, if you ask across, so I am a part of a county manager administrator group that meets on a regular basis. And we, a number of people have pulled that group over time as to what, what ERP system that they use and do they like it? Nobody likes their system. Some people tolerate their system better than other people tolerate their system. So they are complex technologies. That being said, there's no doubt that we can do better than what we have now. And we, so we broke this process into two steps. KT Gallagher and Tiffany Taggart have done an amazing job as project managers to this project. And we did what's called a RFI, a Request for Information, about a month ago, asked vendors to submit video submissions of their product so that we could take a look at them as the teams could all take a look at them and see what different products look like. Now, the actual request for proposal to see what the costing will actually look like actually went out today. So we can see what the numbers look like. And we'll have a firmer budget for our firmer number for budget purposes. But yes, we are thoroughly vetting what we would look at. I can't under, I cannot overestimate for you how much staff time and financial resource have gone into our current financial system. It's infuriating to me, but it is what it is. It's water under a bridge. We can't fix that, but we can fix it going forward, so.
Shorter question. With the City of Menominee, the municipalities and the townships and everything, with the new software, will that integrate and communicate with everybody in the county?
No. It won't because everyone uses something a little bit different. The City of Menominee is actually in the process of implementing a new ERP as well. They went with a product that we took a look at a couple, about a year and a half ago, just to get our eyes on it. They would potentially be a vendor, and then we would have, at least between the city and the county, we'd have the same vendor for the product. But, but in some, I don't, you know, I honestly, I can't even speak to what the municipalities. I'm sure that it's a, between 30 municipalities, it's a hodgepodge of a bunch of different things, including carrier pigeons and, no.
I just wanted to touch back real quick to the neighbors just because we didn't actually talk about the scale of, of the expected, how well they're going to be in the black next year. We're looking at like $2 million in the black. So able to pay back all of the last couple of years. Very, very good news.
And I know, and I believe I tried to say it here, like, how is that even possible? There's been this discussion for all of this time about the losses. And so just for clarification's sake, Dunn, the neighbors of Dunn County, since it was opened in 2013, has only had an operational loss in three years. The year it opened and then not, then 2022 and 2023. The state has recognized, I believe, the hardship of the nursing facilities and has done a major adjustment to the, how they formulate, how they formulate the Medicaid reimbursement rates. That's the biggest change. So Jane Hansen, who does the finance stuff for NDC, said this afternoon that in their new interim rates now for the remainder of the year, they come out in July for the remainder of the year, in one house, in one of the buildings, they went up $116 a day. So, so there, there's a significant adjustment on the state's part in terms of the revenue. We've also stabilized on the staffing side a little bit because the labor market's mildly settling down. We also had the closure of HSHS and picked up some staff through that. But the biggest indicate, the biggest change is the Medicaid reimbursement rates. Anything else? All right. Then we're going to have, I believe, we're going to have an overview of highway. Oh, no, we're going to, oh, no, we're going to be borrowing later. Overview of Highway by Dustin.
This is the moment we've all been waiting for. Probably one of the big reasons why we're here tonight, so. So I just wanted to give a little background, a little information about the Highway Department. So we have 51 full-time employees at the Highway Department, one main shop and five satellite shops. Nice work, Dan. We have 425 centerline miles of roadway. I'm not a, it's not a competition, but Dunn County ranks seven out of 72 counties for the most roads that we maintain out of the state of Wisconsin. 76 federally mandated bridge structures. That's bridges that are over 20 feet in length. That's just the county. We oversee another 75 on the towns and the villages and cities as well. 81 drainage structures from six to 20 feet and approximately 4,000 culverts within our roadways. And then approximately 4,200 traffic signs within our road right of way. That just gives you a little perspective of numbers that are in Dunn County. So to give you a little background, so this is what our revenue sources are at the Highway Department. As you can see, we'll just go around there. We got Bridge Aid, and then we'll go counter, or we'll go clockwise. Transportation Aid, which is what we all know as gas tax. Vehicle registration fee. Other, that could be borrowing, that could be from the county fund balance, whatever. We don't know. That's why that's blank. Levy, state and local roads improvement funds. That is any type of state program that we would get funding from that we typically call Local Road Improvement Program or LRIP funds. Administrative fees and permits. State maintenance. Wisconsin is the only state that actually contracts with the counties to perform state maintenance on behalf of the DOT. Then we have the Old Galley Dam, local governments. That is any type of work that we do for a town or municipality. And then last but not least, the local departments. That's could be the Sheriff's Department, could be the Facilities Department, any work we do there. So grand total of our revenue sources is approximately $11.7 million. Now our revenue sources. Oh, I take that back, our expenses. I'll start at the Lime Green, which is the county maintenance, and we'll work our way around, just to concentrate on those because those are the ones that, that change every year. And those are actual expenses that we at the county have to offset with either our GTA or levy dollars or borrowing or whatever. So we have county maintenance, county bridges, county construction, and county winter maintenance. Those are the big four that I want to highlight. If you look at the grand total of all the expenses, it comes out to just over $16.5 million. So where does that leave us? So we are approximately $4.9 million in a budget deficit based on our revenue and expenses. What makes up the majority of our highway budget? These three main items are what makes up a majority of our highway budget. Roadway maintenance, road and bridge construction, and winter maintenance. Those are the big three that makes up a large majority of our, our budget. We'll go into the, the county maintenance expenses. Just a list, list of the common maintenance items that we budget for annually. Road signs, pavement markings, cracked ceilings, seal coating, surface maintenance, mowing operations, vegetation control, shouldering, drainage work, guardrail repairs, litter pickup, surveillance, accident repairs, and mobilization and transport. So what type of revenue do we have for county maintenance work? So we utilize our, our general transportation aid, which is our GTA gas tax, as we all know it. Annually, this is calculated by the DOT based on, we'll go into that a little bit further in detail later in my slide. But that's calculated every year, and that's what we receive from our gas tax. We also have the vehicle registration fee. And then whatever's left over, if we need more money, we take it out of levy. The number that I have plugged in there for levy is basically just taking a theoretical, our levy amount that was allocated, kind of just spreading it across the board. County road and bridge construction. So I just wanted to present to you like the main classifications of road construction. So we have a resurfacing project. A resurfacing project is pretty common as, as an asphalt overlay that a lot of us know. It's placing a new asphalt on top of an already existing roadway. Lifespan is approximately eight to 10 years to do something like that. Average cost per mile is about $150,000 per mile. Obviously, based on the road condition, based on the width of the road, that can all change. But this is just average prices.
Just a per lane mile?
Yes, per lane mile, correct. Then you have pavement replacement. That's minor structural improvements to the roadway, removal of the existing pavements, no changes to the roadway widths and alignments. Lifespan is approximately 20 years. Average cost per mile is $250,000 to $300,000. Then you have reconditioning. Structural improvements to the roadway and/or removal of the existing pavements, minor changes to the roadway widths and alignments. Lifespan is 20 to 25 years. Average cost is $400,000 to $500,000 per mile. And then last but not least on that is reconstruction. Total rebuilding of the roadway to improve maintain, maintainability, safety, geometrics, and service life. Lifespan is approximately 20 to 25 miles. Average cost per mile is $1 million per mile. We are actually doing a project right now where that cost is actually above that, depending on what it, what it all entails. Obviously, County Road B, that's a reconstruction project, and that was $7 million to do one mile stretch of road, so. And then I put on there the two bridge construction and maintenance costs. So you got bridge rehabilitation, which is just repairing some deficiency to extend the life of the bridge. Typical is 25 to 50 years. I didn't put any costs on there because every bridge varies depending on the complexity of the repair. And then with bridge replacement, lifespan is about 75 to 100 years. The list that I have up here is a list of our proposed 2025 road construction projects. As you can see, there's a long list there. Majority of it, what I want you to take from it is we are proposing to do 18.48 miles of roadways, which total approximately $6.6 million to complete the, the projects on this list. I did provide some of these projects do have DOT funding. Take, for instance, the top one on, on the list there, County Road D, which is the Irvington Hill that a lot of us are familiar with. Estimated cost is 2.8. The DOT is actually paying 80% of that cost. So we're on the hook for 20% of that project. A project like this typically comes every four years, if I would guess, that we get funding from the DOT in a magnitude of like this. As you can see, there's not a whole lot of funding outside of county portions or levy dollars that would pay to, to do this type of work. So like I said before, proposed is 18.48. So like I said before, proposed is eighteen point four eight miles in 2025 to complete some sort of asphalt replacement on these particular roadways. The big reasoning for it is to try to reduce the overall age of our county infrastructure. In 2021, we completed just over eight miles of roadways. So if you take four hundred and twenty-five miles of road, divide that by eight, comes out to about fifty-two years before we would be coming back to that roadway again. We have brought that number down over the years. What we'd be looking at in 2025 is to bring that down to twenty-two point nine nine. You can just say twenty-three years. And like I stated before, the average lifespan of a roadway is twenty to twenty-five years. So that just gives you a perspective on the reasoning for trying to do this eighteen point four eight miles. And that would require us to do that consistently to get that twenty-three miles of lifespan. Provided just some pictures of the proposed roadways that we're looking at doing. On the left-hand, upper left-hand side, that's County Road D from Highway 25 to 816th Avenue, which a lot of you might be familiar as by Jakeson Pioneer. That road was built in nineteen eighty-six, so it's thirty-eight years old. The one on the bottom is County Road D, better known as the Irvington Hill. That was done, the earliest I found was nineteen sixty-seven and they must have did some work in nineteen eighty-six, which puts that at fifty-seven years old and thirty-eight years old respectively. County Road C is the one on the bottom right-hand corner. That's from County Road Z to County Road D in the town of Old Galley. That road was built in nineteen eighty-one, forty-three years old. And we have put overlays on that road when I first started working here. That's what that overlay looks like today. Like I said before, eight to ten years out of overlay is typical. County Road Y is in the upper left-hand corner there, from twenty-five to 360th Street in the town of Old Galley. That was built in nineteen eighty-seven for thirty-seven years. County Road BB, upper left-hand corner, from twenty-five to US Highway 12. That was built in nineteen ninety-six, twenty-eight years old. County Road S from State Highway 170 to County Road N was built in nineteen ninety-nine for twenty-five years old. And you can just see what a road looks like in twenty-five years. County Road G from D to Highway 25, nineteen ninety-four, thirty years old. That's the one in the upper left-hand corner. And then County Road J from Menominee to 410th Avenue, nineteen seventy-three, fifty-one years old. And these are the two bridges that are on the list to be replaced next year. The great thing is, is both of these bridges are a hundred percent funded by the DOT for replacement. If the costs do go over the allocated dollar amount, then the county would be on the hook for that additional funding. But that's where a lot of our funding goes is to basically replace infrastructure bridges like this. The one on the left, that timber structure is on County Road V, just north of sixty-four in Connersville. And then the other one is on County Road Q, north of Knapp. I don't have off the top of my head, my head owl there, so. So just on our county road bridge construction, our revenue and expenses. So what we were proposing in 2025, the expenses are just right around six point eight million dollars. What we have allocated to it is basically the LRIP funding. We have a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars allocated to, I don't recall what road it is. County Road D and G up by Jakeson Pioneer. So that they, the DOT, once the project is completed, we will be reimbursed a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars on a two point four million dollar project is what it's estimated. And then our other revenue is levy. This dollar amount of one point seven million is just the number that was plugged in there after all the other pots are taken up. So county maintenance, county winter maintenance, and this is what was left over of approximately four point seven. That was a number that I had, but it may change, so. Last but not least, county winter maintenance. The budget that drives me nuts. The amount of money we stick into road, state, our road winter maintenance and we have nothing to show for it. Obviously, winter maintenance can vary greatly from year to year. Winter maintenance costs are determined by utilizing a five-year average. The costs include labor, equipment and materials. Just the material costs for one ton of salt is one hundred dollars and twenty-five cents per ton, which is an increase of approximately four percent just from this year in 2024 to 2025. Approximately a thirty-one percent increase just in over the last five years. On the state, on the county side, we utilize approximately a thousand to fifteen hundred tons of salt on our county system. Majority of our maintenance supplies that we utilize for winter maintenance is salt sand, which is sand and a five percent salt solution in it to help reduce these costs. We are not the highest in the state of Wisconsin. Taylor County is like right around a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton. So all depends on where you're located and how they truck it to you, so. We are contracted with the DOT for salt materials. So the whole state of Wisconsin is under one contract. Not only have material costs increased, but also labor and equipment costs. The average plow truck right now in 2024 is three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to purchase a what I consider a plain Jane plow truck. Literally, it's got wheels, a dump, truck box on it and puts salt, there's salt sand in it and it puts it out on the road. So pretty simplistic. Lifespan of a truck is eight to ten years. And I can tell you it's hard to get eight to ten years out of a service life of a truck that sees salt and salt sand. County winter maintenance costs. We have proposed expense of one point six million dollars. Obviously, that can change depending on what our winter is. What we do for county winter maintenance is obviously it's a fiscal year from January to January, but obviously winter is typically October through March is what we'll say. So we do have expenses that were in 2024, but we will only carry us to the end of the year here, so. Now, what pays for those expenses? GTA, vehicle registration fee, which is all taken up by our county maintenance, so that leaves us with levy dollars. What is the general transportation aid and how are the amounts determined? So general transportation aid. Our aids are derived from motor fuel tax, vehicle registration fees and other transportation-related taxes and fees. It's paid to local governments, counties, cities, villages and towns to assist in the maintenance of local roads and the local costs of improvement and construction of those roads. This aid must be used for transportation-related expenditures. GTA to counties is based on a share of cost formula. Share of cost aids are amounts are computed by multiplying each county's six-year average highway-related costs by a statewide average cost sharing percentage. Eligible highway-related costs are divided into three major categories. Maintenance, construction and other highway-related costs, including machinery and equipment costs, building expenses, debt service payments. To simplify it, the more you invest in your roadways, the more GTA you get. It's a simple way of saying it, I guess. How does Dunn County's GTA compare to similar counties of similar size? Dunn County receives just over approximately one point six, one point seven million dollars and we maintain four hundred and twenty-five miles of road. A lot of times I compare us to Portage County. Portage County is over by Stevens Point. They're very similar in size as us. Their GTA is two point four million dollars. So they're investing more money into their infrastructure and roadways. They have approximately the same amount of miles of roads that they maintain as Dunn County. As you can see, Barron County, Pierce County, I'm not saying they have half as many roads as us, but their GTA is very similar to ours. So that just puts it in perspective. Highway budget through the years and operational cost comparisons. So I know this is probably hard to see up here, so this is in your packet. So I just wanted to put a comparison together with our highway budget. I could have went back in time all the way to nineteen ninety-two, I believe. Was it the first year I found? But I just went back to 2010. As you can see, our overall highway budget was approximately thirteen million. What we'd be proposing today is right around that sixteen point seven million. As you can see, the stuff in blue are revenues. And mind you, not all of our revenue sources is in this spreadsheet. I just wanted to show the majority. So there is a caveat to that, not, if you add up all these numbers, they do not add up to that thirteen million in 2010. So just please be aware of that. The ones in blue are our revenue sources. As you can see, our levy amounts have actually decreased. Our state aid has stayed pretty consistent, has fluctuated, as you can recall, it's a six-year average. Our vehicle registration fee started in 2020 and we still have that today. Approximately, I believe we had calculated right around seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand is what we would generate on our vehicle registration fee. Our state aid, our LRIP program, approximately right around that a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars is what we receive annually for that. And then our state maintenance and town and village projects, that kind of has stayed consistently as well. There were some down years, obviously, with towns in the state as well, so. And then you have borrowing and then levy and shared revenue sales tax. In 2023, we received just over three million dollars out of the general fund to offset our costs in 2023. And then you have ARPA funds. As you can see, in 2022 and 2023, we were backfilled with ARPA funds, which have helped immensely. And then the ones in red are expenses. As you can kind of see, that has kind of stayed consistent. Winter maintenance, obviously, that's all dictated upon what Mother Nature throws at us. As you are aware though, if we're not plowing snow, we're out doing maintenance on our roadways. So we're cutting trees, we're pottle patching, we're whatever, doing anything to stay busy, crushing, doing stuff like that. So just because our county winter maintenance might be low, there is additional cost in our county roadway maintenance to make up for that. So our labor's got to go somewhere, so. And then last but not least, the county construction, obviously, you can see has gone up significantly in 2023. But right around that three million to five million range. Then I wanted to put a cost comparison together for you, just to let you know how costs have greatly increased over the years. I know some of you have seen this before. But these are the costs that I've put together dating back into 2000. So you can just look at, I won't go into detail with this, but a big majority of our cost at the county is hot mix. Asphalt pavement. You can see back in 2000, it was twenty-one dollars a ton. In 23, it's fifty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents, so an increase of a hundred and seventy-four percent in twenty-three years. Just to put that in perspective, just the last three years, from 2020 to 2023, it rose thirty-eight percent just in hot mix. And like I said, I won't go through this in detail, but that just shows you how the costs have increased dramatically and our budget has stayed status quo. Current road conditions and ratings. So how do we determine our road condition ratings and what gets completed annually? So biannually, we are required to rate our roads utilizing the Pacer scale. So the Pacer scale is the scale that the DOT requires us to do biannually. It's on a scale of one to ten, ten being a perfect excellent road, one being the road's gone pretty much. So as of August twentieth, I printed this off that bar scale there. So approximately nineteen point four three percent of our roads are in poor condition. That's eighty-three miles of roadway out of the four hundred and twenty-five miles of roads. Fifty-one percent are in fair condition, which are ratings of five to six. That accounts for approximately two hundred and seventeen miles of roadway. Of that eighteen point four eight miles that we have projected in 2025, that comes out of the nineteen point four three percent poor condition for eighty-three miles. So just to replace those roads that are in poor condition would take us approximately four years to do if we consistently do eighteen point four eight miles of roads. The big concern I've had for many, many years is we allocate all of our money into these poor-conditioned roads. Eventually, that big blue line right there will be poor roads. It gets to a point where the road is shot, you can't do anything about it. And the Pacer scale on the left, that's probably way too small for any of us to read, so just tells you what the condition are. What are our future goals? Improve the overall age of our road infrastructure in Dunn County from thirty to forty years to twenty to twenty-five years based on the average lifespan of a roadway. Invest in our current road and bridge infrastructure by completing the necessarily maintenance activities to improve overall conditions. Improve safety. Find additional ways for additional funding sources or grants. And invest more emphasis on reducing overall project costs by utilization of cost-effective strategies. I didn't go into detail what that all is, but there's different ways of utilizing maybe base stabilizers instead of putting lime rock base on a roadway to help reduce costs such as that. Just like that, a good transportation system is the backbone of our community. I didn't come up with that. That's something that's always been at the Highway Department, but it is true. Any questions, concerns? Summed it up perfect. So those ARPA funds have been utilized. They're all used up. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they're already allocated. They've been used up on the road projects or purchasing equipment or whatever was allocated to the highway department, but those funds are a one-time, one-time payment and they're gone. Yes. And then some, because I've increased our, our ask for road construction and maintenance costs.
Hey Dustin, can you give people a quick differential between lane mile and, and, and miles of road? Because that's.
Yeah, so when I say 425 centerline miles, that's literally measuring the road down the centerline of the road. Now you got lane miles is could be a two-lane roadway, it could be a four-lane roadway, where that may increase your, your mileage. So like I said, 425, we have approximately 850 lane miles. I think it's like 853 lane miles and 425 centerline miles. And the only divided highway we have is County Road B, so. Oil prices, aggregate prices. You, I mean, you can see it in the grocery store. I mean, everything we do is, is purchased from something, some source. Parts have gone up on our trucks, tires, everything has just exponentially increased in cost. Like I said, we see it on a daily level on, with our own finances. Did I, did I answer that or not? And I mean, obviously, you got transportation costs, higher labor rates, all that plays account. Salt is one thing that is obviously, it's not made here, so it's got to be barged up the Mississippi and there is years where they do run out. And we've had that where we were literally scrambling for salt and going around the state to just get it. So that stuff has kind of increased due to the demand, sheer demand of it. Like I said, everything, labor rates have gone up, so the prices of everything have gone up, so.
Yeah, I appreciate your answer to that last question. I was certainly in that vein, wondering too, but it feels, as you describe it, it feels like we're on this treadmill. That it doesn't, I mean, we can, we have this, this need that we've got to address. And yet, we have to invest more money just to address that, but as, as we do that, we, we know just because so much of the, of the roadway is dependent upon petroleum and its byproducts, and those are going to go up in the future, no question about it, that we just, it's really, it's hard to see how we can catch up. And what I wonder is, is there, is there a strategy that would, you know, and, and that we would just more and more and more of our budget would go into maintaining roads at the level that we think they're, they need to be at? And no end in sight, but so I'm wondering, is there a strategy that would perhaps prioritize, like some of the roads you showed us today, that do need repairs, but maybe it could get by with a 20-year reconditioning rather than a full reconstruction? So that, that we could, we could sort of balance this demand a little bit?
And, and that's what we are doing currently. We are putting overlays on, we're putting, well, I call them Band-Aids, because like I said, they have an eight to 10-year lifespan. We do have two trucks, we call them spray patch trucks. A lot of you may see that. They go out and fill the potholes, because you and I know you put an asphalt patch in, it rains, it pops right back out. So we've found different means and methods to try to help reduce that cost. But then labor rates go up, oil prices go up, the cost of aggregate goes up. So it's not like we're, you save somewhere and all of a sudden something else goes up. We've tried our best, our mowing operations. We, we put a growth inhibitor on, on, sprayed on our ditches to try to reduce our mowing costs. We get a lot of phone calls from individuals that are not supportive of that. They want us to mow, mow the ditches. So are we forced to go back to mowing ditches? It comes with a cost. We're trying everything we can to reduce the cost. We are. Instead of putting three and a half inches of asphalt down on a road, we might be doing, putting three inches. Instead of putting base on a road, we're not elected not to put base on a road. Safety improvements. I hate to say it, we do very little safety improvements. We are just trying to catch up. We're not improving our intersections like we should. We are not doing that stuff just so we can try to catch up as best we can. So if we would budget 1.6 and let's say it goes over budget, we have to cut it from somewhere else. Cut it from construction, cut it from maintenance, that's what we would have to do. We'd like to see it go the other way. Did I get a half hour? Well, nobody was timing me, so. It's very important.
It is very important. Okay, everybody, we're not going to take another break. Just stand up, wiggle, stand up, feel, did a little something going, because we're all old and when we stand up, it hurts. Jenna, ready? All right, while you're finding your way back to your chair, Jenna's going to join us and she's going to do some work part, workforce data for us.
All right, good evening. I can't decide if they were saving the best for last or the most boring, but hopefully I don't put you all to sleep. I do find this information to be interesting and I hope you do as well. So I'm Jenna, I'm the HR Director. Hopefully I have had a chance to meet you all. So I am going to go over a 10-year FTE review. And I did print out a copy of that slide, so you should have that in front of you. I will also be speaking to some of our workplace, our workforce demographics, our turnover rates. We will also review management positions specifically. And I will also be sharing some of the results from our employee satisfaction survey that we had conducted earlier this year. And then lastly, we will go over the wage recommendation that is currently included in the round one budget. Okay, so I know there's a lot of words on this slide, but that is why I printed it out for you. So you will see here a review of the change in FTE between 2015 and 2025 for each department. And I'm not going to go through each department, but I am going to call attention to the departments that have the biggest change over the last decade. First being administration. With administration in 2016, there was a centralization of finance positions for a total of 13.8 FTE. So those were positions that had already existed in the county. They were just in the departments that they financially, or that they conducted financial duties for, so. But those were all transferred into administration from other positions in 2016. There were also an additional two FTE that were transferred from other departments in 2024. So again, positions that had existed in other departments already. And this, this number also includes a total of two FTE that are currently supporting our ERP project that Chris was talking about earlier. Moving down a bit, in environmental services, you will see that there was an actual decrease of 4.83% FTE. And that is largely due to the removal of the solid waste and recycling division in 2020. Jumping down to transit, you will see there's an increase of 5.87. And that was due to the hiring of the previously contracted staff in that department. So those were positions that were currently being budgeted for in operating expenses, paying an outside agency to provide the drivers for transit. And that is a total of 6.89 FTE. Also note with transit, transit, that it's an enterprise fund similar to the neighbors where they, the revenues fund the expenses and there are, there's no levy allocated to that position. Did I use levy in the right terminology, Dan? All right, great. All right, so probably the largest change in the last decade was in human services. And this was due to a total of 36.66 FTE that were hired in 2022, and those were previously contracted positions as well. They were provided through house calls of manominee. And after a review, it was recommended for those positions to be Dunn County employees, just for compliance reasons. So again, those were positions that were budgeted for in operating expenses previously and just transferred into our own employee personnel costs. In addition, the home care division was removed in 2019, so there was a little bit of a drop in FTE for that department in that year. Any questions before I summarize the overall change?
I have a question.
Okay.
I don't know how to, really how to say it, but within the last year, we had a number of positions that were added. And they were assistant positions and they were another sergeants at the jails and all that kind of stuff. I, I guess, are we looking at the percent changes here? That we've put an assistant, you know, to the different departments?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
When you say assistant, are you referring to assistant county manager?
Yeah, assistant county manager and assistant clerk and
Okay.
a couple other assistants. How does that show up?
Sure. So assistant county manager specifically did not result in an increase in FTE. Initially, that was discussed early in the budget process for 2024, but then it ended up being a request to have that be an adjunct role to an existing position so that we didn't increase FTE for that one specifically. Outside of that, there was a total of 6.5 FTE that was approved with the 2024 budget in new positions.
So if we looked at those six, where would they, would, would they be showing up on these percent changes?
Yes, those would be included. Yep.
So when, when we, when, when we go grocery shopping and we fill the cart with everything that we might need for coming up to do or run our household or run our county. And then when we get to the checkout and we cash out what, what we've wanted to what it's going to cost. It, you know, it's troubling to me that, that that we're put into a position where if we don't find other revenue streams, that we might have to go back and change some of those decisions on personnel. And I find that a sad thing, the way we do business.
I don't have the percentages offhand, but so we, I'm just simply sharing FTE change. But this doesn't show you is how any added FTE are funded and there is a significant portion that are grant-supported, so it didn't necessarily increase the levy ask year to year. I wouldn't, I would have to look back at last year to see what the increase in levy-funded positions was specifically, but.
Well, it's just, it's just that, you know, I see my role as a supervisor as overseeing finances. And I don't see my role as, as a social worker and what programs we should have. I don't see my role as part of the sheriff's department to what the sheriff should do. And I don't see my role as, you know, any other department and how much highway dollars we spend. But I see my role as being responsible with the taxpayers' money. And if I can't see, I can't see where we have added positions or assistance and how, how it shows up at the grocery cart checkout, then I, I'm not, I'm not seeing the full picture. It's like we're calling it, it's one thing, but we're calling it something different. Maybe FTE is, is the proper term for it and I just don't get it. But if you have. Okay, I'm, I'm, I just, I just wish I understood it a little bit better in relationship to what changes that we've made in employment.
I appreciate your comment on that and it might help if I define what FTE means. So I apologize for that. That's the one thing I'm immersed in and in my everyday, so I don't always think to define it. But it stands for full-time equivalent. So this number is a, is a tally of the full-time equivalent positions per se in the county. So of course, we have some that are only a partial FTE that would all kind of factor into the overall, it doesn't indicate the number of employees, is what I'm trying to say. It's really more about the number of increased budgeted hours that are budgeted for certain positions.
Yeah, it might be simplest to think about it as an FTE under normal circumstances is a 40 hours a week budgeted item. So just someone hired for, yeah, that would be one FTE is someone at that 40 hours a week, you know, it's, the salary makes difference. Some, we have some salary employees, but fundamentally, it's, it's that, an FTE is that budgeted for 40 hours a week.
I do have a, another graph that is pretty large and requires a very large piece of paper. But I would be happy to print that out and provide to each of you. It shows you by department, by year, the increase. So if you, I'll have that available to you electronically, but if you'd like me to print it, I can do that. For the sake of time, just wanted to kind of call out the, the major swing and change over the last decade for this presentation, but I'm happy to give any other information that you might find useful. So the overall change in FTE.
Mark here.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Just really quick. So these FTE numbers, okay, do include folks that are on a grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I guess my question is, I'm, I'm guessing we have this information already. I'm I'm guessing we have this information already somewhere in my briefcase. But, um, if we don't, could we get that number? Like, what's it? So like, for example, administration, twenty one point eight two, um, but maybe seven point eight are grant funded. So so that would help us understand that we're not levy pay 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 levy for those positions. Is that not possible?
Can I answer? It's not possible.
Yeah, it's it's it's.
Complicated, but not.
There are a lot of positions that are like ten percent is funded by this grant and twelve percent is funded by that grant over there. And this one, if it brings in a certain amount of money, some of that money comes back. So it's 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 really nonlinear, um.
I I get that dynamic, but I think that might help. Maybe I get it. You can't do it, okay? But I was gonna think I'll log for ten seconds more, okay? If I had that number in my head, it would help me absorb all this, you know,
Sure.
Absorb the fact that it's really not twenty one point eight two that we're funding. It's seventeen point nine nine or something. Thank you.
So I think I can add a tiny bit of clarification to that. So when I say no supervisor Thomas, it's not available, it's because we have spent literally hours trying to figure it out with our current financial system. What we do know or we believe most to be true is about, uh, so we know that of of our twenty twenty million dollars, five million, it's twenty five million of levy, five million of its debt service of the twenty million dollars. About eleven million of that is going to to, um, salary salary costs. So everything else of the fifty million dollars is being covered by grants and, um, you know, other revenue fees, et cetera. Would include all the staffing costs. Yep, fifty million dollars of staffing costs, eleven million of it covered by levy by levy.
And I can speak to that thirty six point six six per, um, F T E increase in human services. And, um, say that that was towards a program in human services, which is called C C S. And that program is funded through grants with the state. So at, you know, at least that portion can be called out as as grant funded positions.
It's a hundred percent cost based funding, meaning we get reimbursed a dollar for every dollar we spend.
And all of the transit similarly isn't levy funded. So again.
Yeah, so to everyone's point, um, there were ebbs and flows, obviously, for within each department from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty five. This is really just a comparison from that point in time in two thousand and fifteen to that point in time with the two thousand and twenty five budget. Um, and I and I can provide you with kind of what that looks like over time as well. So overall, there was a change in sixty one point six four of added F T E in ten years. Forty six point five five of that number were hired from positions that were previously contracted by outside agencies. Oh, I only, really? I'm in trouble. Okay. Um, did I get a half hour? I thought I got a half hour. I'm calling out the timekeeper back there. When did that happen? Okay, all right, so, um, forty six point five five were, um, F T E that was previously contracted. Three F T E were added in two thousand and twenty four for support of the E R P replacement project. Those are not intended to be permanent positions. We will be reviewing that need at the end of two thousand and twenty five. Once the implementation is completed. I will say, if we add up the number of anticipated, um, F T E in total of all of the staff time that is being contributed towards this project, it's about thirteen. So we were, we've only hired three. Um, and so we're trying to operate as lean as we can, um, while also doing that project a service and and doing our best with that. And then, um, so that leaves a total or a twelve point zero nine F T E increase in ten years outside of the previously contracted positions and outside of E R P. Any other questions on F T E? I'm happy to answer or meet with you after as well. Okay, I'm gonna try and fly it through these. So I'm, uh, have some data here on our turnover that has taken place at the county within the last five years. So between the years of two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty four. And this data is pertinent to what I call general county. So that's basically any departments other than the neighbors. I will report the neighbors separately. So in five years, we've had a total of three hundred and eighty nine separations, sixteen point four five percent of those were retirements. The remainder were resignations and a really small portion would be any disciplinary terminations. The graphs show the number of separations within the last five years. And then as well as the turnover rate, um, in the form of a percentage. Sure. It's pretty small. But a takeaway here is that our turnover rate in two thousand and twenty two was twenty eight percent. We are currently sitting at eighteen percent and that percentage is year to date. So obviously, the year's not over. That might increase, um, before the end of the year. And the nationwide twenty twenty three turnover rate average is about three point eight percent. So we are pretty well above average in the form of of turnover rates. All right, so this is the, um, same data that was pulled for the nursing home in two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty four. A total of three hundred and one total separations. Four point three percent of those were retirements. The remainder were resignations and disciplinary terminations. Current turnover rate in two thousand and twenty four, so year to date, again, this number could increase, is sitting at twenty six percent. Uh, but if we look back to two thousand and twenty one, that's down from fifty eight percent. And I was curious kind of what the national average was looking like for nursing homes and was able to find that in two thousand and twenty two, the average turnover rate was fifty three point three percent, and that's nationwide. So we weren't necessarily too far off from the national average within those few years, um, but it's still a shocking number nonetheless. All right, so we have, uh, I looked at management turnover specifically. Most notably, found that twenty one percent of management positions turned over in the year of two thousand and twenty one. That has dropped to five percent in two thousand and twenty three, and currently we're sitting at six percent, um, year to date and in two thousand and twenty four. All right, um, so here's a quick snapshot on recruitment because I'm talking about turnover, right? So I'm wondering how we're doing on recruitment. In five years, the general county has hired four hundred and seventeen total positions in five years. That average, um, well, I also pulled the average of two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty for the number of positions hired in a year. That was sixty six point eight. That has increased in the last five years up to eighty three point four positions per year. So that has increased by twenty five percent. The recruitment at N D C has included two hundred and ninety nine total hires. The average number of positions hired per year is up sixteen percent with the last five years compared to two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty. Oh, I'm so sorry, decrease. Thank you. You pay attention. All right, um, so the next piece that I thought would be important to, um, highlight would be our employee tenure. So this is our employee years of service. Most notably, fifty six percent of our current general county staff have worked here five years or less. With, um, in in addition to that, which we will cover shortly, eighteen percent are um, of age to retire. So that could result in about a seventy four percent, um, seventy four percent of our employee population that would be new to the county within the last five years. Fifty nine percent of the neighbors have worked here five years or less. And twenty six are of age to retire, which could increase to eighty five percent at any given time, whenever somebody decides to retire, right? So our our workforce age currently, as stated, we are, um, for general county, we have eighteen percent that are currently of retirement age, meaning they could retire at any minute. Thirteen percent will reach retirement age within the next five years. And so if you add both of those groups together, that's thirty one percent that could retire in the next five years. At the neighbors, twenty six percent could retire tomorrow. Six percent will reach retirement age within the next five years, and that totals thirty two percent within the next five years. So this is just to, I don't know, maybe make us feel better about our situation and let us know that we're not alone necessarily. This is a graph from the, um, U S census dot gov that shows the increase in, um, the the U S population as far as, um, the population of sixty five years and older. So you can see that it's increasing at a really rapid rate. And I thought it was an interesting statistic that the sixty five and over population grew by thirty eight point six percent of the total population between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty. The silver lining, the good news, is that there is also data on folks working longer. Um, so that doesn't necessarily mean that everyone will retire as soon as they come of age. And we know that they haven't. We have, um, a significant, you know, eighteen percent of our employees that could retire and haven't. But it does speak to how important it is to retain them. And other employees. So management staff specifically, our, um, current management staff, sixty nine percent have been in their role less than five years. Eleven percent of our management staff are currently of age to retire. And so that would equate to about eighty percent new management staff within five years if those folks decided to retire tomorrow. All right, any questions on employee demographics and years of service? Sure.
Do you separate the neighbors from the rest of the employees because it's not mandated by the state?
I like to look at that separately because it is such a unique, um, usually the turnover is vastly different. Um, and I just found it to be interesting, um, especially during the pandemic. It was really an anomaly as far as that, um, profession. So I thought it would be important to separate those out.
Thank you, just curious.
Yep.
Question.
Sure.
Were were those figures that you've presented in the last five years, were those skewed a lot by the pandemic and the way, uh, people responded to it? Because I, you know, coming from a family that is, uh, has a lot of members in the healthcare profession. They revealed that a lot of people quit just because they were, they didn't appreciate the way that they were treated in within the healthcare system. And so they they retired or quit early and, uh, said that they wouldn't go back again. So you would think that some of the figures that you gave for the last five years would have to include a certain portion of people that required or retired or quit early or, you know, because of that.
Absolutely. Um, I would say with the neighbors specifically, um, in two thousand and twenty seventy eight left and two thousand and twenty one seventy nine left, we're down to thirty five so far this year. So it is vastly different. Of course, that I'm did to the five year average, so, um, that will likely get better over time. And, um, yes, there is a very significant spike during those years. Absolutely. So, good question. Those employees are contracted, and so those are budgeted through operational expenses and are not reflected on this report. Let me get back to where I was. Um, I will say you can kind of see here for N D C new hires. I know I'm well over time. Okay, I'll move on. I could talk about this all day if you really wanted me to. Thanks, I needed that. Okay, we're almost done, I promise. All right, so as I mentioned, we conducted an employee satisfaction survey in May of this year. Um, we had four hundred and fifty one respondents, so that's eighty percent of our staff, which is really good. I guess that's the sweet spot of where we want to be for percentage of respondents for a survey. And it measured the areas of general satisfaction, administration, management, performance and professional development, organizational culture, and comp and benefits. Of course, there's a plethora of data, um, within the results of that, and I will be sharing that full report with you all. But most notably, over ninety percent of the respondents agreed with positive statements relating to job satisfaction. Twenty four percent felt that there could be improvement with communication and building trust with administration, and we defined administration as I don't want to say Chris specifically because that, but Chris, myself, Dan, um, are the executive leadership team that work with administration. Ninety percent reported positive relationships with their managers, which is a really great thing. However, about twenty two to twenty six percent felt that managers could improve in holding staff accountable and handling conflict. Eighty nine percent rated positively to statements relating to fairness, belonging, and support for well-being. And then lastly, thirty percent of respondents reported that they were dissatisfied with their current compensation and benefits. This was the most significant area out of all of the, um, sections, um, that reported dissatisfaction. The other sections were mostly positive. Okay, I'll try and do this quick, um, but you also have this right in front of you. And this is just to help you understand how our wage structure is built. Because when we say that we're doing a two percent increase to cost of living plus steps, most people probably don't know what that really looks like. So, um, just wanted to show here that we have a pay structure that has grades A through W. And within each pay grade, um, positions are placed appropriately based on skill, responsibility, decision making. Um, those are evaluated by our class and comp specialist. As far as when we say, um, there are steps, that means that there are eleven steps on each grade. When we would apply a two percent market adjustment or cost of living adjustment, that means that the full grid will be adjusted by two percent. That means that each of these individual rates increases. When we say that we, um, would propose a step increase, that means that anyone that's currently placed at a step, you know, not at the top already, that they would bump up to that next level within that grade. So we are, um, we with the round home budget, a two percent adjustment to the grid was included, um, to factor in cost of living and to stay competitive with the market. Um, just reference that, um, the consumer price index for two thousand and twenty four is currently sitting at two point nine, which is down significantly from the last few years. And there is a two point seven five percent difference between each step. And those are, um, provided to with board approval for the budget to employees based on satisfactory performance. And that is it. Any other questions, if there's time?
One.
One quick question. Earlier, you stated that we had some that were actually let go for disciplinary actions. But in the step process and increasing the wages, I don't see anything for merit or lack thereof. So that's not calculated into increases?
So per the language of the ordinance, employees with satisfactory performance evaluations receive a step increase in January of each year. Does that help? Correct, yep. That, yep, that's the intent of the ordinance, yep.
Thank you, Jenna. Very nicely done, and you handled the pressure of suddenly having to cut half your talk quite well.
What do I have? Two minutes? What, 15? Oh, I get to talk slow. All right. So first thing I want to point out, because I did give you a handout of a bunch of 11 by 17 pages of green text. I'm not going to talk about that, that's just provided to you for your own reference. That is something we put together just to show all of the maintenance that needs to be done on all of the building structures owned and maintained by Dunn County. It's a pretty long list. And I also made a book, I didn't give you everybody the book, but if you're really interested, there's a book. So, but I wanted to provide it with you, it'll give you a little insight into, you know, what future types of maintenance need to be done. And that does include what I'm about to present here, and it includes, Highway Shop is all on there. So this item is something that is, you're going to be seeing again and talking about again in the future. This is something we are looking to add to the CIP in 2025. So you've already approved the 2020 CIP, so we are looking to amend that so that it will come to the full board to do that. And so this has come out of the Facilities Committee, it just has to go through its other hoops before it gets all the way to you. But you're getting the presentation now because it's related to budget. So, to start off, the Judicial Center HVAC system. So the Judicial Center was built in 1998. For those of you that are good at math, it means it's an old building. So, so it was built in 1998. I have some statistics there about all of the components that kind of make up an HVAC system. This particular one is a boiler and chiller-based system. We've talked about this before in some of the other committees, and it is, it was top-notch back in 1998, which is completely inefficient in 2024. So the way that system would actually, does actually work, that chiller will chill the air from, let's say it was 100 degrees on Monday or last week, it's going to chill that air all the way down to like 50 degrees. Then it warms it back up in order to get it to 70. That warming process is a process of getting the humidity out of the air in order to put it back in. But you can just imagine the inefficiency of that. So the boiler is running year-round, and it's, so it's running in the summer in order to warm up the air-conditioned air, right? So just think of some of the inefficiency, and that's just the way it was done. It isn't like it was a bad system, it's just, it was a 1998 system. So that is made up of two boilers, one chiller, all of those other things that HVAC people know what they are. I don't, air handlers are fans. And, can't read the screen, even though I wrote it. So those are the pictures of the actual two boilers in the Judicial Center and the chilled water system at the bottom. So it is an old, out-of-date system. I have in there that the expected replacement of that system would cost about $3 to $6 million. Hard number to really come across, but that's based on estimates that I found, it's just looking at the total square footage of a building, and so they're just, it's a math based on that, so.
If I might, it's also worth noting that in addition to being inefficient, it's end of life.
I was going to get there. Yes, so, yeah. So Bergy is a company that we had worked with, they came and did a study looking at our, really our energy efficiency. So this is kind of a statement from them, you'll see some branding, borrowed from their slide deck that they had provided, so I'll give them some credit for it. As they had noted here, we actually are pretty efficient from the energy standpoint in our, in the county. This building is geothermal, if you're not familiar, so is the neighbors. So we've already kind of gone a long ways as it relates there. The Judicial Center, however, is not. So as they look through that, they've identified that a replacement of that HVAC system and implementation of a geothermal system in the Judicial Center would be a good idea. And then along those lines, to also add solar to be able to power that system, so. So, this is what I just said. So we're looking to do those same things. Solar panels having about a 25-year lifespan. And the way geothermal works, it uses compressors, which means it's going to use electricity in order to, and while we cool the water using the ground. So it's really about pumping that water is kind of where that energy utilization comes in, and so that becomes an electric utility as opposed to a gas utility, which is how the boiler would work right now. So then we would supplement that with solar, and then that solar is then running the geothermal system. So, oh, that last slide does talk about a few of the advantages and how we can do that, and looking at the Inflation Reduction Act and other grants and strategies. So, the Inflation Reduction Act, it's a federal grant, well, federal act. What that did, and this thing kind of describes it there, the short version is, so you may be familiar, if you put a solar panel up at your house, you can get money back on your federal tax return for implementing an energy savings initiative. Here at the county, we do not file a federal income tax, so we can't get that. The Inflation Reduction Act allowed nonprofits and government agencies that essentially don't file these federal taxes to receive those same benefits. So now we can put up a solar panel, and the federal government will give us money, and thanks for doing that. So, so this is an advantage, that's something that's out there that we want to take advantage of while it's available. So, the next idea around this is there is a state statute and federal statutes around performance contracting. So what that really means is, and I see the flyer, I provided you a flyer that kind of explains a lot of this as well. What that means is, right now, we are paying Excel for the electric to, and everything to be able to run our systems. And that's at 100%. Implementation of a geothermal system and solar is going to decrease how much we have to pay Excel. And so now, performance contracting says, we're going to take that savings, and we're going to use that over the long term to pay off our system. In the meantime, that company that designed this system and told us how much energy we are going to save, they're going to guarantee that savings on a yearly basis. Short version is, was we have to pay back that cost for the initial implementation, our energy savings will pay for that at no additional cost to the taxpayer, we don't have to raise taxes, we don't have to raise debt levy, any of those things in order to do that. We just use that energy savings. And if it's a bad year, it's 100 degrees every day, and we don't save that much in electricity, the company that did this will pay the difference. So you don't have that risk of the bad year. What does that look like? So this is kind of a picture of the geothermal, so currently this is, there's geothermal in covering this building and the neighbors. There's a well field right outside the building over here. It's a little oversized, they're going to utilize a portion of that, and then they're going to add an additional well field. They'll connect those two well fields, which will allow these buildings to kind of share the ability to do that. So, short version would be nights, weekends, there's nobody in this building, the air can be a little bit cooler, if it's really cold out, all of that additional efficiency can be used over in the Judicial Center where there are people that spend, you know, months at a time living there. So, so that's kind of an advantage in doing that, so it's actually, provides a little bit more efficiency for this building as well as that building, and some redundancy as it relates to that. This is the concept around the solar panels, we're talking about five acres of solar. This image shows that out kind of past the house, over by the field road out on the backside of the building over here, none of this is set in stone. But, but it needs to be in a place where it can catch sun and be within somewhat of close proximity to those buildings so that we can connect it up to the, to the power grid. All right, so I want to give you the scenario. This one just came at the end of the day, so I had to update my slide deck for it. I told people it was going to happen, too. So, the scenario here, and I can't read my slides from here, so, oh, five minutes, I can do it. All right. You have an old car, it's paid off, it's worth about $4,000 right now, and it gets 10 miles to the gallon. You buy some new tires for it, so now you got $2,000 into your $4,000 vehicle, that gets 10 miles to the gallon. Then a week later, when the tie rods goes bad, so you throw another $500 into that vehicle. Right? So now what do you do? You have a vehicle that's worth $4,000, it gets 10 miles to the gallon, you've already put $2,500 into it, now the transmission fails. You have a car that's worth nothing. So you can pay another $3,000 to fix it. So what are you going to do? Right? So you can fix it, you can put that $3,000 into it, you now have a $4,000 car that you put $5,500 into. To me, that doesn't seem smart, but you can do it. You can replace it, so you can spend $8,000 on a new car that gets 30 miles to the gallon. And then you just have to give up on that $2,500 that you already put into the old car that's now waste. Maybe you can sell the tires and get a little bit out of it, we'll see. Your third choice is you can just avoid that altogether. And before your car goes bad and before you invest in that old car that was very energy inefficient, you can buy a new $8,000 car. I don't know where we're finding $8,000 cars anymore, but, you know, work with my scenario. That gets 30 miles to the gallon before you're forced to invest, and you get to save money in buying gas. So now, we're going to go with this scenario. You have a 25-year-old HVAC system that's not energy efficient, and now you have to replace an air handler for a half million dollars. And then a week later, some of the connections start to leak, and you need to replace them for another $10,000. What are you going to do? Another major component fails, and now you got another half million dollars, now we got a million dollars into this system that's old and energy inefficient. I can go through the scenarios, you can work them through your head. But that's really the question that we're looking at right now, is that system over in the Judicial Center is going to fail? It's going to fail soon. And when it happens, we're going to have to act immediately in order to replace those things and potentially put half millions of dollars into those, which is a cost you'll have to throw away if you ever have to do that. So, we're looking at trying to act quickly to get in front of those failures, and we feel we have a solution that can replace that HVAC system and pay for itself. That was my slideshow. The car thing might be real. Larry?
Dan?
Yes.
Nice job. I was fortunate to be at a facilities meeting and hear the presentation, and I thought you did a really good job. You missed on one thing, though, that I thought was very important when the young man stated that we would be dealing with American-made solar panels. And I thought that was an important issue. The mechanics of this, or any air conditioner that I've ever been aware of, is that moisture from bringing that high temperature down and bring it up. How does the geothermal, how does the geothermal handle that moisture? And then one last thing, I really appreciated you took those sunglasses off, you've got a fine head there.
They're always on my head, so I don't lose them. Yes, and Dustin and me had a timer, so I couldn't really talk about the American-made products. No.
Just, just looking at your analysis for paying for this, you know, the installation cost, 11,4, rebates, incentives, 3.4, et cetera, et cetera, over the years, 19.6 million. The one comment you made was the company, if there was a bad year or something, would pay the bill, but if the company's bankrupt.
So there's a lot of controls that are put in place in the, as part of the legislation. So for a company to be qualified to do this, and so these numbers are rough numbers that were put together as part of a proof of concept, we have to go to an RFP and people have to bid on it to be able to do that. They have to be fully bonded and cover so that that entire risk is managed on the backside. Yep.
I'll add one other thing from the presentation that was particularly, it's not going to matter to any of us because we won't still be at the county at that point, but the well system has about 100-year lifespan. The parts running the well system are much cheaper than conventional HVAC, so whoever's stuck with fixing the HVAC in 20 years will have a much cheaper problem than we do.
All right. Yep? In this building? Oh, what did you, I have no idea. I've been searching around for people with 1998 experience, and, because I know that there was some talk, and I think like the air conditioning wasn't even a part of the initial bid for that building, it was a late addition and other components, so. Yep. All right.
Right, yeah.
All right. In the interest of time, I'm going to have you take a look at Biata's documents, and then I'm going to have Biata come back when we can spend due time on borrowing in September, for our September board meeting. Just because I don't want to rush that, I think it's important information. You have the documents, we'll make sure that we review those. I think you get the general concepts of borrowing, what that will do is give you some concept of what it means to borrow on a regular basis and what that does to our debt service. So we're going to finish up our evening with an activity that we're going to try to smoosh. We, I don't know how long it'll take us, we hope we can do it in half an hour. Dan would say that that's ambitious, although we did it yesterday morning with the Employee Relations Work Group, we did it this afternoon with the department heads, and so you are our third run through it, and we're going to work on balancing our budget. So Andrew, Jenna, Biata, myself, and Dan will all facilitate, that's why the screens are on your tables, and we will facilitate a conversation to give you an opportunity to work with the numbers to balance the budget.